Okay, I'm going to call to order this regular city commission meeting of Monday, April 21st, 2025. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipilawa peoples who have stewered this land throughout the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, I'll go ahead and get our meeting started here with the roll call from the city clerk. Please.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Werner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Shamro.
Here. We'll move on then to announcements from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. I have a few announcements this evening. Today is the last day to take the Hickory Hills Winter Survey. We encourage those who recreate at Hickory Hill to provide their input so we can better plan for the future. The survey may be found on the Hickory Hills page on the city's website. April is Fair Housing Month. The city will be working with the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan through our CDBG initiatives. Fair housing means you can choose where you live free from illegal discrimination. More information on fair housing may be found on the city's website on the Community Development Block Grant Project page. April 22nd, tomorrow, is Earth Day. We, as a city, are proud of our efforts to forward more sustainable tomorrow for our residents and the community at large. One of our largest accomplishments in the past year was the new senior center, a clean energy-powered, fully electric community center. We invite the community to celebrate the milestone during the grand opening celebration on April 30th from 2:00 to 6:00. And lastly, I know that this has already been reported on, the fire that was in the pines last week, but I did want to acknowledge that employees of the City Department of Public Services, our Streets Division, Chris Hatanga and Matt Radke were working near the pines when they spotted heavy smoke coming from the nearby camp spot. They rushed over to find the tent and belongings on fire. Matt immediately called 911 while Chris grabbed a fire extinguisher from a city truck and worked to contain the flames. They ensured no one was inside and stayed on the scene until Traverse City Fire Department arrived. Their quick thinking is a powerful example of public service in action. With backgrounds in law enforcement and the military, both Chris and Matt continue to serve Traverse City with dedication and heart. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Announcements from the city clerk, please.
Yes, some meetings to announce for this week, the week of April 21st, 2025. The city commission's ad hoc committee on ethics regulations is going to meet on Tuesday, April 22nd. That'll be at noon in the committee room, which is on the second floor of the governmental center. The Brown Bridge Trust Fund ad hoc committee will meet on Wednesday, April 23rd. That will be at 11:15 a.m. in the committee room on the second floor of the governmental center. Arts Commission is going to meet on Wednesday, April 23rd at 3:30 p.m., also in the committee room. The Historic Districts Commission is meeting on Thursday, April 24th at noon in the committee room. And finally, the DDA Board is meeting on Friday, April 25th at 9:00 a.m. in the commission chambers. Just one community update, that is just to remind folks that leaf and brush pickup begins on Monday, April 28th, and the crews will begin on the west side of the city, moving east, and there will be just one pass, so just one pickup. And information regarding leaf and brush pickup is available on the city's website, and that's all that I've got.
Benjamin, just clarification. I believe that the ad hoc tomorrow on ethics is actually at 11:30, not at noon.
Okay, let me double check.
So that's what my calendar invite says, and Jackie's nodding her head too, so I think we're...
Okay, thank you.
The fire in the door says at noon.
Well, updating for the public, it's at 11:30, so.
Thank you.
And do we have anybody, people here representing for workers Memorial Day? If we do, join me at the podium? Okay. You're supposed to... Oh, are you here? Thank you. So this is a proclamation declaring April 28th, 2025, as Workers Memorial Day. Whereas on April 28th, 1971, the Occupational Safety and Health Act, OSHA, went into effect promising every worker the right to a safe job. And whereas every year on April 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. And whereas the U.S. Department of Labor and the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates that Michiganders have died while on the job at an average rate of 147 people per year over the last decade. And whereas the 2024 Census of Fatal Occupational Injuries found a worker dies every 99 minutes from a work-related injury. And whereas it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured or disabled or have died as a result of workplace accidents. And whereas we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions. And whereas recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state. And whereas the city, township, and county wish to pay tribute to the workers who have died or have been injured or disabled in the workplace, in workplace accidents, we honor the contribution of Michigan's workforce and call for increased workplace safety. And whereas the city of Traverse City renews our efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and we rededicate ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace. Therefore, I, Amy Shamro, Mayor of the City of Traverse City, hereby proclaim Monday, April 28th, 2025, as Workers Memorial Day. Thank you for coming, and that's so important right now to talk about, so I'll let you speak for a couple minutes.
Hi, my name's Dave Fashbaugh. I'm the Business Manager and Financial Secretary for IBEW Local 498. It covers this area, 17 counties in northwest Lower Michigan. Our labor union, like most all labor unions, support job safety. That's the biggest thing why labor unions were started. I hope you support this referendum or this resolution. And we're not... We have worker deaths here. We just don't see it in the news. Somehow, they don't get published. I'm on the state website, and they send me updates every time somebody dies in the state. We've had two deaths, I believe, here in this county in the last, I think, six months, nine months. One was a roofer and can't remember what the other craft was that died. So it's not a union, non-union issue, it's a worker issue, a safety issue, and it's... Everybody needs to go to work and be able to know that they're going to come home as safe as they can to their family or whatever they got going on in their life. But thank you for supporting this resolution.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I did just want to clarify 100% that that Ethics Ad Hoc Committee, I know the calendar invite says 11:30. The agenda that was posted does say noon, so it can't start until noon tomorrow. I apologize for the inconvenience, but we'll send that out officially. It is noon that it begins tomorrow.
Thanks for the clarification.
I might need to be there abridged, but...
What's that?
I said I might need to be there a little abridged then, but that's good. Thank you for that. And thank you for Mr. Fashbaugh for coming and representing here. I think it's a, as you pointed out, an issue that we don't always take note of when it's not in the news, but it's very important and very much affects a lot of people, especially northern Michigan. So thank you for being here for that. All right, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar, and I'll hand that back over to Benjamin.
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public can ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed from it and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests are automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single city commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item 1, consideration of approving the minutes of the April 7 and April 14, 2025, meetings of the city commission. Approval recommended. Item 2, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances to provide for collection methods for non-leenable water accounts. Enactment recommended. Item 3, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances to provide for collection methods for non-leenable sewer accounts. Enactment recommended. Item 4, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, which would expand sewer consumption timing for calculating irrigation charges. Enactment recommended. Item 5, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, which provides for year-round billing for irrigation. Enactment recommended. Item 6, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, which would require that water customers must allow city staff to make changes to their water meter. Enactment recommended. Item 7, consideration of enacting an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances to modify the timeframe in which notices of delinquent water and sewer charges must be provided to utility account holders and to have such delinquencies paid on the winter tax bill as opposed to the summer tax bill. Enactment recommended. Item 8, consideration of authorizing a contract for professional services associated with the creation of a new five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Approval recommended. Item 9, consideration of authorizing transfer of the Escrowed Class C Liquor License with outdoor service and Sunday sales AM/PM permits from JEH Traverse One LLC to Tacos and Tequila LLC and authorizing the city clerk to approve the registration. Approval recommended. Item 10, consideration of authorizing lease agreements for shared property at 500 West Front Street and 851 Woodmere with Grand Shepherds County. Approval recommended. Item 11, consideration of waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing a purchase order for the repair of an overhead door frame, wall section, and associated components at the city garage as a result of damage, with the majority of the cost covered by the city's insurance carrier and the vendor supported by the carrier. Approval recommended. And finally, item 12, consideration of approving an $89,394.43 budget amendment for the Old Town Tiff budget to increase budget expenses for intersection improvements on 8th Street and Cass Street and 8th Street and Union Street, which were completed in calendar year 2024 as recommended by the Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees. Approval recommended.
Okay, would any commissioner like an item pulled? Heather?
Eight.
Eight? Any others? Eight, okay.
Eight also.
Oh, well, it's already pulled, so eight is great. Thank you. Anybody from the public need to pull any of these items, other than eight? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I move that we accept the consent calendar as amended.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so we'll start with number eight, and go ahead. I'll give... Heather, you were the one who called it, so...
Right. Michelle's not here, huh? No one's representing parks.
I don't see anyone representing parks, but I can answer questions to the best of my ability.
Okay, well, I understand that the, an updated master plan is necessary for grants from the state, but that these, that the plans aren't graded. Their pass fail, so you don't get a 10 or a 2, you get a pass or a fail. And that when you submit then an application for a grant, that application is judged on its merits, it's not judged on the quality of your master plan. So it really, the master plan doesn't impact the decision-making on your grant application. So this is a very expensive master plan, $72,000 possibly with the contingencies. There was a local group that it was about half that much. I just wonder what, what is... These updates used to be done in-house. You know, I know Traverse City gets bigger, but why are we spending so much money on this master plan? And why are we spending so much money on this master plan when, you know, a park could use some new playground equipment or...
Yeah, so the Parks Commission asked for this master plan bid to be reissued in February. The bids are listed in your board packet. We, Michelle Hunt, our Park Superintendent, worked with the Assistant City Manager, Deb Allen, to put together a rubric to evaluate and to interview, and you can see the ones that listed in bold were the top three. They were not the highest bids, they were not the lowest bids. Yes, years ago, the city staff did the master plan in-house. The last plan that was completed in 2020 was done by Gosling Zubik. So we've done it both ways. But the Parks Commission, this is their recommendation, and they voted to move it forward to this body for approval.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I share some of Heather's concerns, and I appreciate the attempt to, you know, at a very late moment, answer some of my previous questions. However, there still seems to be some missing information. One of the things that I noticed in looking through the RFP is that it appeared that a good chunk of the plan was going to be updating the current plan as opposed to creating new content. And that made me even more scrutinize the level of spending that was being requested for it. So I would like to respectfully request that this be tabled until we can hear from the Parks Department and more information from the commission and help us to understand things like how much of our Parks and Recs budget is actually grant-funded and, you know, how much are we investing to be eligible for grants versus how much are we actually getting? Some really, I think, important information to decision-making, so that would be my respectful request.
Do we have commissioners who want to speak to that? Go ahead, Mark.
Just what's the time sensitivity of this?
Well, there is some time sensitivity. We are, we aren't, we don't have very much time left in order to get to the public input that we would want, and there are certain deadlines. You have to work your way back from when the deadline, which I think is early next year. So we're, we don't even have quite 12 months to complete this at this point.
So what I am curious is if we did this in two weeks and maybe Michelle or someone could be at the meeting, would that be possible to answer some of the questions? Or do we, do any commissioners want to just proceed? Because I will say, I understand some of these questions here of wanting a little bit more detail. I don't personally think that we just don't do a master plan and discount what, and I'm not saying it's 100% this, discount how much we get in grants, because I know we get a lot in grants. It's how we've gotten pretty much every major project over the last 10 years. But, and I don't think staff at this point in anywhere in Traverse City has time to take on something like a master plan in-house anymore. That's why it went out last time. But I agree that there are some questions that need some answers here, and that if that is the will, that perhaps in two weeks, I'm not expecting it to come back as a bright new polished item, but if there are some questions that need to be answered and commissioners want to wait two weeks, we can do that. Or if some commissioners want to proceed forward right now, they can do that as well. So I'd leave that up to you all to make a move or not make a move. Heather?
Yeah, we've gone from an item that was removed from agenda that was about a $200,000 master plan rewrite to a $70,000 master plan rewrite. If it's only just adding to the current master plan, it's not actually a whole new master plan. I think we need some information from the, Michelle Hunt. You know, it's still a lot of money. It's, it could be $70,000. And playground equipment at one of our older parks, like Ashton Park, for example, where that playground equipment is as old as me. You know, you could buy a whole new set of equipment, and, which isn't very inviting for current families and new families. To tell a little story, I live over in the Orchard, well, the Boom neighborhood. When I was appointed to the Planning Commission eight years ago, they had just finished redoing Clancy Park. They spent quite a lot of money, and the neighborhood contributed to it. I thought, what in the world are they doing, spending all this money on this park? There are no children in this neighborhood. There were my children, there were a couple, like two others. Everybody else were, they were original homeowners. Everybody was old. Wow. Eight years later, the whole neighborhood is full of families. That park is full of families. Parks with new equipment and new layout attract families.
That's very true. I am going to say, and again, I'm fine if we pause this, that having a master plan helps to make sure that we're equally distributing and doing projects, because I know, I can say the same thing for Traverse Heights, that had about four parks that have been neglected for decades. And so I think that's speaking to the need to have a master plan, but I agree that we need some more information about, maybe we need some more information about the decision and how it was reached and the process by which it was reached. But I'm not going to, because we do not have a motion in front of us, I'm not comfortable with leaving it as this is an either-or of fixing a park or having an RFP. So I'm just clarifying that up here on the dais. Oh, go ahead.
If it's, if it's the will of the commission to delay this, I would recommend that the study session on April 28th become a special meeting so that it's not delayed unnecessarily into May. We really are not, we are working on borrowed time with this project.
Okay, let's do that then.
And I am not saying we shouldn't have a master plan. I'm just saying, yes.
I'm not saying, I'm clarifying because this statement was made of an either-or, and I don't believe that is a great...
Does a motion need to be made to table, or do you just...
No, we can, we'll just bring it back on the 28th. And so anybody who sees it as a study session, we will post it publicly as well, but it will become a special meeting so we can take action on this item. So with that, that is our only pulled item, and so we will not have a motion. So we will go to old business, number one, which is implementation policy regarding the charter provisions, and I'm going to hand that over to you, Lauren. And just to clarify, actually, sorry, because I was part of this. We did have this conversation initially, a few, a couple months ago almost now, gave everybody some time to digest it, send feedback, ask questions of the, both the commission and the public. And so this was ready to be brought forward. I suggested we bring it forward as a draft, just so everybody had a first-last look at it, and, but continue to proceed with the policy. So Lauren is just going to kind of tee up how we went from the last, how we got to here and how we went from the last iteration to this one, and we can keep the process going.
If I may just, real quick...
Sorry, Lauren, we're jumping all over you.
I think the idea is to not have any action on this item tonight.
Right, and that does...
And I did email that clarification out today.
Yes.
Just to be that, just to be crystal clear on that piece. Thank you.
Sure. So you did a pretty good job actually summarizing it, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot more to say. We did get some feedback from several members of the public, and I took notes from the last meeting, the feedback that the commissioners had. And so actually Benjamin and I sat down and tried to do our best to incorporate that into the draft while keeping the spirit of making sure that we have a neutral ballot question. We added a little bit more detail to the ballot question and clarified that, that the vote would happen before this, any city commission action, but after other, all the other requirements under whatever act that particular Tiff was under, what that act requires, but before the city commission would be required to act. And we just moved some of the language from the actual ballot question up into the preamble so we could accommodate some of that additional detail that the commission was working for because the ballot question has a word limit and the preamble doesn't. So that's the reason why that language was moved up. And then, under number four, the pre-existing Tiff, we took the language that was suggested by a member of the public and just tried to incorporate that into that, that particular number. So that is the summary, and I will take notes on your conversation tonight, and we'll go from there.
I'll just say too, if anybody doesn't have the packet written in front of them, there are, you can see the edits that were made since the draft to reflect some of the items that Lauren just summarized. And again, you know, these are, this is how this will go on a ballot, so details are important, as was noted at the last one, but they are also limited to be understanding of people trying to show up to vote. So it won't include a five-page plan in it. So moving on with that, what questions do we have or comments on it? Go ahead, Jackie.
Lauren, could you please help me to understand the preamble? You know, what does it look like on a ballot? Does it appear on a ballot, or is it not there?
Absolutely. Yes, it does appear on the ballot, yep. It appears as a paragraph right above the actual question. So that whole thing would be on the ballot for people to read. It's just that there's a requirement for a word limit for the actual question, and that's just the way that election law is. We can't change it, but we can add, we are able to add a preamble that kind of gives some more of that background.
Any other questions or feedback? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, since we do have emails, or what I saw with two members of the public, Mr. Minervini and Mr. Bimber, would it be possible to request that the city attorney meet with those individuals to discuss what they've brought forward in their emails rather than us trying to parse like what's here, what's there, this, that, the other?
Lauren, I think you touched on it in your overview that, when you were saying that you had gotten some input, did that include some of those folks that had those emails and you were able to have conversations or anything?
I didn't have conversations. I had their, their letters that were sent in with their input in it, so, you know...
It's just, we got emails in the past couple days.
Go ahead.
I was thinking it'd be best if we just keep that within the public record and then take that into consideration amongst, of all, both sides of things. If we start suggesting that the attorney meets with every individual that writes in, it could become very cumbersome and/or create the illusion that a few individuals are shaping the city instead of the people that were elected by the people.
Yeah, because my understanding is that, looking at some of the emails we've gotten in the past, and I know, well, I'll leave it at that. The emails are public. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, and Tim mentioned Fred Bimber and Mr. Minervini, but he didn't mention Judy Nelson. And I thought Judy Nelson's email was particularly concise, and I thought it's, all of her edits were clear and made the whole amendment much easier to understand and less, there was less wiggle room in there, less for problems like with, that we had with the tall buildings implementation, for example, where you just leave out a single word and you end up with some other kind of meeting. I would look at, I, personally, I thought Judy Nelson's edits were perfect.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, no offense was meant. I didn't have a chance to read that email, and I slipped my mind that I actually saw that I had an email from that individual.
I guess first I would say, because I was looking through my emails, sorry, that's why I was pausing, but we did have an email from Fred Bimber, and we did have from Raymond Minervini and some others. I guess because they just came today, I haven't had a chance to digest them all, and I don't know that they're radically different than anything that Lauren has looked at. So we would bring this back in a couple of weeks. What I think I would ask is, and we'll have public comment on this even though there's no action being taken, is Lauren, if you want to digest some of those, if there are some further edits that you would want to make, or if not, when we bring it back, you can certainly explain why you don't think they apply in this case. Again, this is why we wanted another meeting and not just the initial one we had, because when these do come back, there does tend to be more. That said, we could have meetings ad nauseam for the rest of our lives, and somebody will always think of something and add, and I'm not trying to diminish that, but that's why we do want to keep a schedule going, but we also want to take into consideration what people have said. That's why I wanted this to come on without a motion or without any kind of action being taken, so that this would be a chance after a big pause, since the last time we discussed it, to have more feedback come in and have the city attorney be able to look at that and others be able, us as the decision-makers be able to look at that. So I guess I would say to that, not a guarantee that that will be there, but we'll have Lauren look at it and give feedback on any of the feedback, or any of the emails or public input we've gotten since this agenda item was reintroduced this week. Yeah, go ahead, Jackie.
I think I, the last time this came before us, I was, I was commenting in favor of more specificity within the ballot language itself, and I, I am still hopeful that we could get a few critical facts within the ballot language itself. I think if we could just identify who's sponsoring it, what is the time period, what is the total dollar value, and what is the purpose, you know, that would, that would really go a long way toward clarifying, and, and I'm hopeful that with that handful of And, and I'm hopeful that with that handful of facts, that voters who are considering how they, how they wish to weigh in on this would be pretty well informed about what the proposal actually is.
Could you clarify for me what you mean by sponsorship? That sounds very corporate and fingered, so. I, I think that a lot of times our initiatives are not corporate.
Is it a DDA, is it a Brownfield, you know?
Yeah.
Who is proposing this, this TIF plan?
I'd be curious to hear Lauren weigh in on that at the end of the day.
I'm taking notes, so.
Okay.
If I have, if I have two more weeks to come back, I think that's very fair, so thank you.
Great, yeah, no problem.
And I had another question. Are we thinking about not only TIFs that come from a particular source, but also TIFs that are initiated by petition? Are we hoping to have our policy operative in both of those situations?
There's no way to initiate a TIF by petition.
Nope.
So it has to, in every instance of a statute that creates or allows a TIF, there's a process laid out whereby it would come from, like, the DDA would propose a TIF or, you know, the Brownfield Board would, there's a, there's a specific process that's laid out and there's no room in any of those for an initiative.
And those are legislatively, that process is legislatively laid out and it has room within them for voter appeal, correct?
And, and would there be an amendment?
Hold on just a second.
Depending on how they're created, so for example, a DDA TIF that's created is done by ordinance. And then that ordinance could be referendummed by the public after it is adopted by the city commission. But there's no way for the public to initiate an ordinance that creates a TIF because there are public hearings that are required, it has to come from the DDA with a plan, then there are public hearings, and then the city commission would adopt an ordinance that creates it. So there's no way to do that by initiative.
Yes. Okay, I saw Heather and then Tim.
So in fact, it would be, it's really impossible for a TIF to come to a vote without it having appeared in, in the public.
Yes.
So if, whether it's the Brownfield, whether it's the DDA, or if the city, for example, were to come and say, we want to create a TIF on 14th Street, for example. It would always be debated and discussed and there would be a public hearing before it would appear on the ballot.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tim.
But that's to create, does that apply also to modifying, amending, or extending? Like if there was a petition initiative for a charter amendment to, whatever, amend, modify, extend?
If there were, if the, if the citizens initiated a charter amendment to create a TIF by charter?
No, no. So are you saying like if an existing TIF needed to be modified, it has to go through a public process and then would need to be voted on?
Yeah, it would have to come from the DDA Board with a plan.
Yeah.
If you're changing a plan, the modification would come.
That's what I'm asking for.
Correct.
So it's not just creating, it's modifying or extending even?
But that's already, the difference, I think, when the question before is that, that kind of modification would now be covered by these proposals, correct? Like they automatically have to go to a vote?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if there was a new TIF, it doesn't fall under this, it would go through the statutory process, but there would be public hearings and, and, and it would ultimately be an ordinance that could then be paused and challenged if someone didn't want it to go through, through a referendum.
Right. So for example, the DDA, a possible modification would come from the DDA Board. In the case of a Brownfield, the Brown, the, it's a county Brownfield, so the Brownfield would come up with the modification and then the city commission's required to concur in a, changing a plan. So it will always come through that statutory process to the city commission. And the intention of the policy is to, is to make clear that if something does come to the city commission for that kind of an action, that the vote would occur before the city commission takes any action to approve or amend or, or change the TIF and the TIF plan. Does that make sense?
Mostly. Would that include a petition by the public to end a TIF?
Not once it's, once it's formed, if it's already gone through, and let me clarify, ask, this is for my own, wrapping my head around what you're asking, Tim, if it's different. So like if somebody wanted to end TIF 97 tomorrow, would they be able to do that? Is that what you're asking, Tim?
Yeah, if they collected enough signatures to get it on the ballot, to put it before the electorate, that they wanted to end TIF 97 in 2026 instead of 2027.
Right. I got, I don't know the answer to that as I sit here, but if, if we're talking about TIF 97, you have to look at the, you can't just end a TIF, you have to look at all of the, the encumbrances on that TIF. So the city commission also couldn't just end a TIF, it's more complicated than that. So we'd have to look at that a lot more closely to understand whether that's even possible.
And before we get too far afield, this is the implementation of proposals one and two, which do not apply to ending a TIF early. That's, that would be a referendum or something else, that would be a different legal question, correct?
No, but it ties into this.
If it modifies the TIF.
Oh, I see what you mean for the modification.
If a petition is not allowed to have anything to do with TIFs.
Right.
So I guess I would ask you to consider it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I'd be curious where we'd get into that quick. I'm going to say Heather and then Jackie.
Yeah, just one more thing, one more accolade for resident Judy Nelson and the problem with the, the endless ballot, I guess you would call amendments, the endless ballot amendments coming up over and over again with the same wording, trying to get a different answer to the question. For example, if the DDA were to submit the exact, submit a proposal to extend the TIF this year and then the same one next year and the same one next year. Judy Nelson very neatly approached this problem and I think solved it very well.
We can have that weighed in on that when we bring this back. Go ahead, Jackie.
I just wanted to get a sense of the timeline. Is there, are we under time pressure here or, you know?
I think.
Help us to understand that, please.
When we discussed it, we're not under a heavy timeline, but I also don't want us to get into, another two months from now, we're bringing it back and it's not fresh for everybody and, and we're rehashing kind of that, that, kind of like what we're doing right now. We've put it out there as a draft, it's sat for a while, we've gotten some more feedback. I'd like us to have more of an iterative process so it's not quite as much time in between. We might go through the iterative process four times if we're still finding new and relevant things. But at the same time, you know, we're getting some good feedback from the public and from commissioners. Lauren's been able to sit with a lot of stuff, so I, there's no rush on it, but I also, voters voted. I think we need to have a policy for them before next, before November would be great, I think. You know, I don't think we're all, any of us are trying to drag this out so that's a year after it was adopted and we're still not doing anything with it, but I want us to also feel like the community has had plenty of time for input and not being rushed, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else for that? We've, we've talked, as we've talked about the agenda on this, so that's, I'm talking for everybody, sorry. Any other questions? We do have the emails here and we will have public comment on this in a moment. But anything else from the commission that you're looking for? Okay. Though this is not an action item, there is no motion. I will open this up for public comment right now. Benjamin, if you want to kick it off, and if you wanted to make comments, please feel free to line up and we'll get that sorted.
Yes, anyone wishing to comment, we just ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment. When your time has elapsed, the timer will beep. And finally, as always, we ask that all language be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Raymond Minervini with the Minervini Group. I heard a very complex discussion about a complex topic, implementing TIF. The two charter amendments, one and two, I'm more familiar with the Brownfield side, so I'm speaking to the Brownfield component of the two charter amendments. This is a very drawn-out process to seek an approval for a Brownfield plan. It involves the state of Michigan, the county, County Brownfield Authority. As you could imagine, the cost and time involved in pursuing approvals or even the preliminary approvals with those entities is a tremendous hurdle to overcome. Add to that a vote of the electorate presenting the very same complex discussion to the vote of the people without having some sort of validation or review at the public level like this body here with professional staff, I think is really a short, changing the public process. What I'm asking for is the same courtesy that was afforded to Safe Harbor when this body gave a resolution of support, I believe, last year, when, to avoid a situation where there'd be a lengthy and costly pursuit to modify the SLUP. Well, speaking of lengthy and drawn-out processes for approval, a Brownfield plan, for example, is one of those types of processes. Why not present at a preliminary point to this body the merits of a Brownfield plan for approval and have it discussed for a resolution of support or not, or don't take action, prior to an entity, you know, pursuing affordable housing, pursuing infrastructure improvements for the city, all public benefit, that's the predication of a Brownfield plan is based on public benefit. Why not have that discussion at this level before it's taken to the vote of the people and put on the ballot, which is another costly and expensive and drawn-out process? So that was part of my communication to the city commission today. And I would ask that something like that be considered among the other topics of discussion for this very complex issue. Thanks.
Thank you. More public comment? I appreciate everybody being Midwest nice, but can we keep the comments rolling?
Fred Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, excuse my hoarseness, I'm a little bit under the weather today. The second draft is not an adequate attempt to establish appropriate procedures for dealing with city props one and two. Currently, the most glaring example of that is the endless unlimited do-overs that would be permitted to somebody if the voters disapprove someone's TIF proposal. That should not occur, that is, an attempt to evade the voting rights of city voters who have once voted something down. In fact, the city attorney often represents that she's trying to protect the city from potential liabilities and lawsuits. Let's take a look at that and look at what way the city commission could, by changing the procedure that's proposed at that point, actually protect the city. What I have proposed in my proposed implementation procedure is that if a proposal is voted down by the voters at an election, the city commission convene within 60 days of a certified, of certified election results and it can then either vote to disapprove that proposal or take, or vote to take no further action. If it votes to disapprove that TIF proposal, you've undercut the basis on which somebody that feels aggrieved by that election would attempt to deal with it. The city commission turned him down. Hopefully, there will be a majority of city commission members that recognize voting it down is the civic-minded thing to do and that party won't stand a chance in court. I disagree with the city attorney's very restrictive view of what ballot language is supposed to include. As Judy Nelson has indicated in her suggestions, there's a statute that says, first, in order, the ballot is supposed to inform voters what they're voting on. And finally, this, this policy that gets entered does need to recognize that proposals affecting or proposing to change TIF plans can come through initiative petition. We wouldn't be seeking to create them, we would be seeking to limit or shorten or terminate them. We can do that by initiative petition.
Mr. Bimber, thank you for your comments.
And this policy needs to be able to deal with it.
Thank you.
Judy Nelson, 429 South Garfield Avenue. I almost feel like, what's my point? Everybody's made them for me, but I will repeat. First of all, Lauren, this is an improved draft over the last one, so thank you. As, as people have said, I really feel that the ballot question could be more informative. There could be more, what I would call factual and neutral information in it, such as request, the requesting entity, or I believe Jackie called it the sponsor, the estimated total funds to be captured, the legal authority, that's real simple, it's either Brownfield or the TIF Act, and the purpose of the plan. I can actually envision that we would, you know, the planning department wants to do corridor, corridors and wants to do corridor TIF plans. I could envision 14th Street being a corridor TIF plan at the same time that somebody has a property there that they're developing as a mixed use and housing, and it would be on the ballot at the same time. And they would both be on 14th Street and they would maybe have a different timeframe, but most voters aren't going to know the timeframe very well without the other information. So I support the idea of getting more information. It can be either in the preamble or the question as long as it's there. My other thing, and I would agree with Fred Bimber, that this idea of going back over and over and over again with the same identical proposal is just crazy. It's a waste of time, it is bad public policy, it undermines the previous election results and the voters. I understand that some commissioners think that that would, would not be, that would be foolish and people wouldn't do it. But I bring to your attention the DDA. And frankly, the charter amendments on the ballot last fall, most of the discussion, at least three-quarters of it, was around the MDF plan. They passed because people did not want an extensive MDF plan. And so what is the DDA going to do? They're going to put the MDF plan on the ballot again this coming November, or somebody just told me maybe August, I don't know. But, so, and, and without any changes. It's just foolish or as.
Thank you.
You can finish your sentence. It's foolish or, you can finish your sentence if you'd like.
Or the definition of insanity.
Thank you. That's a good way to end that.
Trying the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result.
Thank you, Judy. Any other public comment on this item? Bringing it back, I did want to clarify that, to my knowledge, unlike here, I'm not at any kind of agenda reviews or anything, there is no plan to move, the Moving Downtown Forward Plan to a vote anytime soon. Certainly, I think if it was August, it would have, the ballot language would basically have to be out right now to start getting approved. So there will be public meetings if that does happen, it will be on a DDA agenda ahead of time. So just wanted to clarify that as factual. Will it move forward at some point one day? Probably, I would think so, because it has been. But that is not in the, that's not part of the process right now and that will be publicly discussed when the process does move forward. With that, go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, one of my, I guess, concerns or in general queries with a process like this is looking at institutions or municipalities that have done similar things. And in my searching, I cannot find any other municipalities that have gone through anything similar, which makes me worried that we are in a unique situation with unproven legal ground that regardless of what language we ultimately accept, we are putting ourselves at risk of potential legal action against the city from people that are either thinking this is giving too much to potential applicants or removing too much. is giving too much to potential applicants or removing too many rights from them.
Thank you for sharing that. Is there any other final comments, thoughts that anybody wanted to share for Lauren to take as she's digesting all of this? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for your input. I appreciate that. Thank you all, the public, for feeding back. Like we said, we're going to have Lauren look at that, bring back another draft, or have some more information on maybe some of the questions that were raised if they're not in the draft for some reason, and we will continue this conversation. So I want to thank everybody for that, but again, there's no action being taken, so we're not going to have a vote right now. So with that, we'll move on to item number two, which is a Code of Ordinance update coming from Chief Richmond. So I will give that to, I don't know, Liz to start kicking off, or are you kicking off, chief?
Well, I can kick it off while Chief approaches the podium. So back in December, we proposed some ordinances, received some feedback from the community and from the commission, and so we are bringing back one of those tonight, and I will turn it over to Chief Richmond to explain what we think the value in this ordinance amendment is for our public safety.
Good evening. Matt Richmond, Chief of Police, Traverse City Police Department. And actually, the ordinance before you tonight was not one of the three that we brought before. We took your feedback, we took feedback from the ACLU, we took feedback from the commission and Agenda Review, and it was advised that this ordinance should be the only one on the ballot tonight. This ordinance is an amendment to the Parks General Ordinances, providing a tool for enforcement of those ordinances within the parks when other means do not work. Currently, right now, if we enforce our park ordinance, we usually give everybody a warning. We tell them that they need to change their behavior or discontinue the actions that they're currently doing. If they comply, then that's the end of our interactions. If they do not comply, then they can be issued a civil infraction or a misdemeanor appearance ticket. If they continue not to comply at that time, then the ordinance that we're asking for is a trespassing component to that. So if they do not comply after those two things have been provided, then they could be held responsible and arrested for trespassing. This is not attached just to the camping ordinance. I know that's going to come up, because we put out a date that we're going to enforce our camping ordinances throughout the city come May 6th. It attaches to each and every ordinance within the Parks General Ordinances. Currently, there is already one section that does encompass this same language. It's under events in the Parks Ordinance. If they do not comply without ending an event without a permit, we can ask them to leave, and if they do not, they can be held responsible for trespassing.
Do we have any questions first? Go ahead Heather.
So just to be clear, this ordinance would come into effect if somebody is throwing garbage around, camping, swimming where they shouldn't, building a fire...
Correct.
Shooting off fireworks, you know, driving a car across the park. And the penalty would be, well, you would be asked to leave the park first, and if you don't leave the park, you will be escorted from the park for the rest of the day.
Correct. And that's after we make contact with them, we address the situation, hey, you can't do this, it's against city ordinance, please stop. If they refuse, then we can write them a ticket or an ordinance, or an appearance ticket, as outlined already. And if they continue, or if after that, we ask them to leave and they refuse, then we can remove them for that day. It means that they can come back and utilize the park tomorrow, and hopefully the behavior is different, and we go about our business.
Okay.
And this isn't something that we're looking to, you're in the park, you're a violation, we're going to arrest you on the spot. It's not what we've done, that's not what I've advised our department to do. It's make contact with those individuals, correct the behavior. If we can solve it by a discussion, then so be it. That's the best way for everybody involved. If not, we move on to a civil infraction or appearance ticket, and if they continue, then we can take them to jail for trespassing, after they've been advised to leave and refuse. So it's just the same as an ordinance or the trespassing on the books now and in our Parks Ordinance already. They would be told to leave the park, and if they refused at that time, they would be arrested for trespassing.
So do we have other questions, or does someone want to make a motion? Mitch?
If somebody is violating laws outside of our Parks Ordinance, say they are being drunk and disorderly in a park, or they are driving a motor vehicle in a reckless manner, could they not be charged for those and arrested accordingly?
If they violate a city ordinance or a state law anywhere in the city, they can be charged with whatever crime or ordinance they have violated.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I just want to clarify what's something you said prior to Commissioner Treadwell's question, which is that this is bringing the parks, and I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that this is bringing the trespassing element of the parks, what relates to parks, in alignment with our trespassing as exists in the rest of the city? Is that what, so you were saying that the trust, can you clarify?
So there's a state law for trespassing. If you're on somebody's property, private property, and you're unwanted, we have the individual ask you to leave, we will ask you to leave as well. If you leave, that's the end of the interaction. If you do not, then you can be held criminally responsible for trespassing. The trespassing that would be amended for this ordinance works in the same way. Again, we see a behavior that is against the Parks Ordinance, we address it, if they do not comply, we can cite them. And then if we ask them to leave the park for the day and they refuse, then we can apply the trespassing.
So currently, the trespassing law that exists is the state level, and that applies to private property but not public land. Is that correct?
It can apply to public land as well, but that element of the warning and asking to leave has to be accomplished before trespassing is effective. And so on private property, it's the private property owner that would ask the person to leave, and on public property, it would be an agent of the public property owner. So in this case, a police officer would ask the person to leave, and if they didn't, then the trespass statute would go on. Does that make sense? It's that element of the notice and the request to leave that is being put into the ordinance.
So if, however, let's say that this didn't exist, could a police officer, without passing this, can a police officer give those warnings to, and to trigger the trespass statute that exists at the state level?
Yes, but I don't think that the prosecutor would enforce it without that being memorialized in the ordinance.
Okay. Do we have other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
I move that amendments to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1064 Parks, which would allow officers to give a trespass warning in city parks, be introduced and scheduled for possible enactment on May 5, 2025.
Go second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Okay, now, if anybody wanted to have any broader discussion or further questions, please feel free. Go ahead, Mitch.
As some of you might have guessed, I am not in support of this. I feel that we do already have enforcement mechanisms in our Parks Ordinance, and for various other crimes of both, against both state law or city ordinance, we do have mechanisms to allow those people to be arrested for those crimes.
Sorry, chief, you just sat down, but I was going to ask for you to kind of clarify, because what I'm hearing is that the, actually, at the end of the day, the enforcement kind of does need this meeting added to it?
That is my understanding in talking with both the city attorney and the county prosecutor. We have not, to my knowledge, on public lands arrested them for trespassing, it's usually just private properties.
Okay.
I didn't say for trespass, I said for other crimes.
I guess I'm, what is the question again?
Yeah, that's where I'm...
He didn't ask a question.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was asking for clarifying of other crimes.
So if somebody is driving a vehicle in a reckless manner, they are violating the state motor vehicle code and could be arrested and have their vehicle impounded for that.
Okay.
That's an example of another crime.
Okay. Go ahead, Heather.
Is that the same for camping?
No, there wouldn't be an arrest for camping, because camping is not a misdemeanor under the ordinance. I'm looking to make sure. Yeah, it's a civil infraction, so it would be a ticket and not eligible for arresting without a trespass.
Okay, any other comments then or questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, then thanks, chief, sorry, I dragged you up, I'm just trying to clarify everything so I have it right. We'll open this up now to public comment. If anybody would like to make some public comment, please approach the podium.
Hello, my name's Amanda Siggens. I'm not a resident of Traverse City, but I do work here, and I do work with the unhoused community. I've been arrested in Traverse City for being homeless myself and spent three days in here as a teenager in your jail, and I can tell you that nobody wants to be homeless, and we should not be arresting people for having to survive. And if that means camping on publicly paid property, that's probably their last option, and I don't think that you should be able to put people in jail for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
I'm Mr. Reed, I'm a Traverse City resident. So to me, this ordinance is kind of before the cart, horse before the cart, is because since the Safe Harbor, the city, the Planning Commission did approve the whole entire thing with Safe Harbor, this law has to go through, you know, a public hearing from the city commissioners, is that I think that that should be done first before doing this ordinance. I think Safe Harbor has to be around before this ordinance actually goes into effect, and I think, I think doing it right now is way too early. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any other comment? Or we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
No.
Commissioner Treadwell?
No.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
No.
And Mayor Shamrow?
Yes, but motion fails.
That's correct.
Okay. So moving on to item number three, that is the TC, the kayak, bike, and brew. Basically, we had a conversation about this a couple weeks ago, and this is now being brought to us for just the 2025 contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Want me to provide a quick overview?
Yep, please.
Yeah, so the contractor agreement that the city had with TC Ale Trail, which operates kayak, bike, and brew, and paddle for pints expired last year, and at the City Commission meeting approximately a month ago, the commission discussed and asked for me to work with Mr. Daly, who's the owner of TC Ale Trail, to present you with terms of a potential one-year extension, which I've done, and I'll explain the next steps if the commission so desires, which is this agreement would reduce by approximately 70% the total number of maximum allowable patrons to participate in their tours. So from a maximum of 4,100 to 2,400, which is again approximately a 70% decrease, it also would decrease the rent by approximately 62% or close to 67% if you were to presume that a 3% cost of living or inflationary adjustment would have been made to the rent, which historically had been the case. And then this also would provide for 50% of their rent payment to be due before the first wave of patrons with the balance or the remaining 50% by July 1st. So those are the terms that we developed between the two of us, and so that's what's before you. I do want to say that I'm very much looking forward to a community discussion, which I think will mostly happen before it gets to you at the Parks and Recreation Commission level, to discuss these types of requests and get an understanding of where the public is at in terms of how they should be considered, the lens with which they perhaps should be looked at, and also the fee structure. And I anticipate something coming back to the City Commission probably in the fall, right around there. So that has been something that just, I've had some pause over bringing something before you, because we haven't had that discussion, and I think that it's really good to do so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
Question. Thank you for mentioning the public input, because my question was going to be whether it's conceivable that Riverfront and other city residents might be able to participate in those pre and postseason meetings that, you know, that they would have standing to have their voices heard in that venue.
Yes, I mean, I can tell you that whether it would be at, I mean, I see no reason not to include residents in those pre and postseason meetings, or they can certainly provide me with their thoughts directly, and they have in the past, they might not have recently, but I'm always very much interested in their input, and we need that. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
You can hold the floor, Jackie.
Heather, go ahead, please. This is a different, different topic.
I just wanted, was the Fish Pass Advisory Board, I mean, have they worked it all out? How to get through all that?
Yes, I can't say necessarily officially the Fish Pass Advisory Board, but folks who are involved in Fish Pass, including our Public Services Department, have reviewed this plan, and they'll certainly, you know, be weighing in throughout Fish Pass, and we'll make adjustments as needed.
Well, I also look forward to some public engagement on how our river in the city is being used, and also the erosion issues. We have some serious erosion issues, do people not accessing the river in the right way, and, you know, scrambling about on the banks. Must be some way to lessen that harm that's being done to the riverbanks. So not to mention just maybe too many people at one time, but I do appreciate that this has been cut down by half, really. So that's a start, anyway, for this year.
Yeah. So Tim, do you have a question?
Now, I'll make the motion that the mayor and city clerk execute an amendment to the agreement with TC Ale Trail for its kayak, bike, and brew, and paddle for pints events, with the terms as generally outlined in the city clerk's April 17, 2025 communication, with such amendment subject to approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Warner and Treadwell. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Jackie. Sorry, you did have yours up, and I totally forgot.
No worries. In a blue-sky world, I wondered if the rental fees could become part of a dedicated fund to restore and enhance the features of the park, you know, if there's damage to landscaping, if additional trash management funding is required, I wondered if those could go directly to restoration of the facilities that are being used.
The answer is yes, if the City Commission wanted to so dedicate those funds, that's something that absolutely can be done and is within your purview.
As we move into the policy discussion?
Yes. Yeah, or even with adoption of the budget in the coming year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a good point, yeah. Yep, Mitch, go ahead.
I am glad that we have an agreement that we're able to move forward with for the coming season, and I do look forward to the hopefully robust public process to decide what the plan should look like going forward. As we have seen in the flood of emails we've received over the past couple days, there is a lot of interest in being able to have liveryed operations on the Stritch River, and I hope that into the future, many more people are able to enjoy our city from that waterfront perspective.
Good point. Anything else? All right, with that, I will open up for public comment. Does anybody have public comment on this item? All right, with that, I will open up for public comment, does anybody have public comment on this item?
All right, good evening everyone. Todd Clupper, city business owner and member of North Warbin Lake District Association. As we prepare for the busy summer season, we continue to face challenges and uncertainties such as the constantly fluctuating food costs, ever increasing equipment and repair costs, and a scarcity of 20-somethings with more experience and capabilities to do some of our back-of-the-house tasks. But I'm not here tonight to ask for relief or assistance for these challenges, although we do greatly appreciate your efforts to increase affordable housing opportunities in the city. Rather, I'm here tonight to ask for your support in providing a little consistency to help balance out all the uncertainty. For almost a decade now, the filling station and many other local establishments have benefited from our partnership with Paddle for Pints and Kayak Bike and Brew. From May to October, this partnership brings in patrons to enjoy our establishment. Since Troy and his team do a great job running these events, we know the size of the groups, when the groups will come and leave, and are able to get to know and work with the guides individually. This is key to our ability to staff properly and provide all guests with the best possible experiences. Over the years, Troy and his team have absolutely listened to business, city and public feedback. As a result, the group sizes are smaller. Responsible beverage consumption is strongly encouraged and we ask our opportunities to order food at each stop. These changes have helped events run smoother and safer while increasing their positive impacts to the area businesses and lessening some of the negative impacts. Working with a responsive, consistent team like Troy's is far better than pass alternatives or the independent groups that show up unannounced and don't abide by the parameters outlined in these agreements. Additionally, I feel it's important to point out that I have a great view from Hall Park. And I'm there a lot, maybe too much. And I have never seen a situation where another community member or visitor has not been able to access the boat launch at Hall Park. In fact, Troy's staff has always seemed accommodating and makes every effort to stage the kayaks in a consolidated manner and out of the way. And if I can shift my focus to the river for just a second, something I have been fortunate to enjoy my whole life here in Traverse City. Since the first test run that Troy and I took down the river over 10 years ago, it has been of the utmost importance to minimize the impact to the river. Groups like Leave No Trace are the model for how these types of tours should be run. Kayakers are told to make sure all trash is kept in their bags until they can dispose of the waste properly. Guides monitor this and other guidelines are followed and attempt to pick up any trash they see, most of which is not related to the tours at all. I have said this many times, but I believe strongly that people are more likely to support the protection of our environment if they have opportunities to actively enjoy the outdoors, whether that be hiking, biking or kayaking. Paddle for Pints and KBB are a vital part of our business's ability to grow and prosper and enable us to continue our efforts to be a positive contributor. Can I finish real quick?
You can finish your sentence.
Okay, I enthusiastically lend my support to Troy's efforts to make this agreement happy or happen, and I hope you guys can support it too.
Thank you Todd.
Brevity is not my strength.
You didn't do too bad. Any other comments on this thing?
Troy Daly, Traverse City owner of Kayak Bike and Brew. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight and understand our relationship with the city over the past, over the past 10 years. We have proudly contributed to Traverse City's outdoor recreation scene by offering unique and memorable experiences that connect residents and visitors to our beautiful waterways trails and vibrant local businesses. As I asked for your approval this evening for a one-year extension, I am also excited to continue the conversations about the future and our continued partnership with the city. Our commitment remains strong, we're here to adapt, grow and continue giving back. And beyond the tour, our participants often stay in nearby hotels, eat at local establishments and shop in the neighborhoods that they explore with us. They are a key piece of supporting Traverse City's hospitality industry, helping drive, helping drive dollars to the businesses that make this area so special. And I'm sure you have received letters and there are people also here tonight. We are also proud advocates of healthier drinking culture, we are certified through the Better Drinking Culture, require all guides to follow and promote overly responsible consumption, if any. Our team regularly preaches and practices these standards on the river. And sustainability is a cornerstone of our operation, and we're committed to minimizing our environmental impacts while maximizing the value and accessibility for our city residents and visitors alike. And we discourage alcohol on the river during our tours, we go the extra mile to ensure our guests leave no trace and protecting the waterways, wildlife and all the parks that we enjoy. I appreciate your time and thoughtfulness and consideration as we continue our partnership. I just wanted to add, now that I got through that, that I completely agree with you. I would love for, for all the rent, all the rent money to go into a fund, to go into the rivers. Over the last eight years, I don't know where the money has gone. I know that it's gone into like the general, but I don't know where it, like it hasn't impacted the river or the access in a direct manner, so I would appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Russell Springsteen, I reside at 301 North Cedar Street. I own Right Brain Brewery at 225 East 16th Street. I've been, I'm in support of Mr. Daly. He's run an incredible operation since I've known him. What he says he will do, he does, and it's a, it's a great partnership to have. I also have concerns because I am frontline for a lot of people. I speak to many people that come to my establishment. And something concerning that's come up at least five times since the original ticker is from local residents and from residents who own second homes here. Why is the city extorting this business? I don't support that term, but I think you need to know that that is being thrown around. And so I don't think that's a perception or a good reputation for the city. I'm not sure how this arbitrary number came about, and that's what's discussed with other people too. Where did this number come from? Today's news said it went from 48 to $30,000, which I find pretty interesting. If you're going to limit him, the numbers of people to say 2,500, that's 1,250 user fee. Is this a user fee? Is it a tax? How, how are you coming to this number? I'm curious. If you can tell me, and we could all do that, I can tell the people who are asking these questions so that I can be better informed as well. Just know that in the, in the past few years, the numbers have declined significantly. And when I said, I guessed 30%, because I see it coming through my door, 30% in each in the last two years. So maybe that's where that 60% decline came from, not sure. But I can tell you that with our economy, that our tourism is not what it used to be a few years ago. And so I would hate to push people away. Also, people are saying that, oh, we heard that, that's canceled. That's not a good thing for this man's business if the tourists coming up here already believe that that is not happening this year. So that's a perception from the consumer that we need to change. I happened to do an event in Petoskey last week, and they said, oh man, we get all your overflow in the summer. And all I could think of is, well, I hope to get yours. Because if we're pushing our tourists away, I mean, it's a huge economy.
Excuse me, Mr. Springsteen, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, any last comments? Seeing none, we'll do a call, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we look forward to this year's operations and robust conversation throughout the summer and into the fall. So thank you everybody for that. Moving on to new business, we've got the Memorandum of Understanding with Preserve Hickory, and I will hand that off to you Lauren. Or it's, well Lauren's on it, or is it Liz?
Oh, you can do it. So this is a project that Preserve Hickory came to administration with and proposed. There have been some unknowns, I guess I want to say, with the snowmaking system up at Hickory. And so Preserve Hickory is proposing to do a comprehensive review of that whole system and come back to the city with a report on what we've, basically what we've got up there. That's going to require the participation of the city, basically staff providing information to Preserve Hickory and access. We may need to dig some to look at some of the lines that are underground that we're having some porosity types of issues that we don't fully understand. So this MOU just basically lays the groundwork for, for that partnership to move forward and bring back a report. And then once we understand what we're dealing with, with the system that we have, then we hope to continue to work together with Preserve Hickory on what might be some ways to address that and, and fund it. And those items will come once we know what we're, what we're dealing with. So that's the purpose of this MOU.
Do we have any questions or motion? Mitch?
I move that the mayor and city clerk execute the MOU for the procurement of a Hickory Hills snowmaking infrastructure review and report. Such MOU subject to approval as to its form by the city attorney and to its substance by the city manager.
Support.
All right, thank you, and Heather, your hand went up at the same time, so.
Yeah, no, I totally support this, and I, Lauren did a good job of explaining what this is all about. Technology changes, some of that equipment is old, you know, we have new winters, we have good winters and bad winters. And maybe we can, we can get some tech up there that will operate under all circumstances. But while I have you here, I have to say this really quick, that we need a summer camp at Hickory. We need a summer camp really badly, I went to summer camp at Hickory as a Brownie. We can partner with the Y, we can partner with NORTA, there are many different organizations to partner with, but this is a priority, it's a priority for the residents. And that Hickory Lodge is locked up nine months out of the year, let's get going on this and get it opened back up again.
It's an interesting, good idea. Jackie, you had your hand up.
I, I just, I'm very happy, I'm pleased with the partnership. I just wanted to ask the city manager about being the primary point person from the city side on this, whether you have the bandwidth or if there is some engineering expertise that might be appropriate, that this could be delegated to the city engineer? Just thought I'd ask.
Good question.
Well, no, I'm happy to be the point person on this, and I've talked with Chairwoman Ness on that as well. No, I believe that the partners that Preserve Hickory are bringing to the table, working with me and both Chair Ness, will be just fine. I also did want to point out for the record that this is the first recommendation coming to this body from the Hickory Hills Advisory Committee, and so I just wanted to put that in, in the record.
That's great.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open it, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that's exciting, we got something off the new, new advisory committee already. All right, our next item is consideration of a three-year professional services agreement with tech support services, and I believe we have Jerry leading on this one.
Yes, well, we have Jerry Swanson, who's our GIS and IT director, he's approaching the podium. I just wanted to say, if you note in the executive summary, this was delegated to our staff and many of those who are on the team to go through these 24 bids, and it was a heavy lift, are here tonight. So I just wanted to recognize our city treasurer, finance director Heidi Sheppi, our city clerk Benjamin Marantet, our deputy city clerk Sarah Lutz, our police chief Matt Richmond, our GIS administrator Jerry Swanson, and IT support specialist Porter Baling for all being a part of this process.
Great.
Take it away.
All right. So I do want to do a little prelude here, so I'm standing tall, it's been a couple of long weeks, but very exciting times for the city. So one week ago, we formally separated the majority of our IT services from the county. Obviously, it's a very important project, very complex, but really it's helping us, you know, move forward with managing and deploying technology, both for our operations and then, you know, ultimately for the public. It was quite a collaborative project, so I do want to thank county administration and the county IT department, lots of meetings, city administration, and also city staff, because we broke a lot of things and we're constantly trying to fix them, and we're getting, getting real close. So thanks everyone for the patience. And then really, the only big component left on this project is getting the TC PD fully transitioned, which we're working on through June, they just have a lot more complexity with dispatch and the law enforcement center. So obviously, this all kicked off back in November when the city commission approved us to separate from the county, and we went through the kind of that agreement to kind of get that in motion. So at that part of the decision, we also were directed to go to RFP. It's obviously a very hot market, we ended up with 24 bids, as city manager Vogel alluded to, and quite a range of services and vendors from all over the country, even some offshore vendors. And so we really had to kind of dive through all these proposals. So we actually used Deb Allen's matrix she had used for the grant writing proposals. And we kind of tweaked it to our own liking based on our proposal. And so the IT team spent a whole day in the conference room, if not more, going through all that process. Were able to get a nice scoring matrix built, and then really kind of come up with some finalists to kind of weed out based on pricing and, and some other variables. As Liz mentioned, we had a, we did end up forming that internal committee. I think I laid it out in the memo, I think we met four or five times. But the goal was to get some really good interviews in place with kind of our finalists, so we did do that. We spent a half a day doing interviews with the firms that we felt were up to par. And we also then followed through with some questionnaires and reference checks. So throughout that whole process, we did decide to move forward with our recommendation, which is in the packet, which is Millennium Digital Technologies for this contract. And, you know, we had some good discussion, and we do really feel like, you know, all the finalists that we came up with do meet the needs of the city. But MD Tech, as we call them, they definitely kind of came in as that most qualified, but also that lowest bidder. So that's obviously a component. You'll see as we get into budget talks, you know, one thing that's always been a concern to me when I started looking at the city's IT, is we never really had a true cost of what things cost. We didn't really have a good way of tracking how much technology that we spend throughout our departments. And so we're really working with Heidi, we really honed in on a good, you know, core amount of services we need and cost and replacement, and so that'll come out obviously in the budget in the coming month. So obviously, we've been working with this firm, and one thing that's really stood out to me is they're, they're really good problem solvers. And, you know, there's a lot of complexity involved, especially with this kind of, you know, unpeeling of this legacy infrastructure. So that was key, but also, you know, one thing in our RFP we put in there was about a one-sentence line, but we pretty much said, we really want to empower staff. We don't, you know, a lot of these managed service providers, they just kind of want to beat your IT. And, and so we really want to, you know, empower our staff to take ownership of this and reduce these costs over time. And so we feel they will help us do that as well. And then I think lastly, I just want to say that, you know, this kind of concept of independent IT, it's kind of crazy, but also super monumental for the city. I just think it's going to pave our way for scalable, secure and efficient use of technology for both staff and citizens. So happy to answer any questions, and just excited to be here tonight.
That's true. Any questions? Go ahead Heather.
I, after what happened last year, I, I was disappointed to see Millennium, Millennium, you know, turn up at the top. I mean, that was a lot of commotion and confusion and some bad optics coming out of that. And I'm just, I'm really concerned that here we are back again with the same company.
Well, we're in the question portion, so I guess I'm going to turn yours into a question. Jerry, the committee that you assembled and everybody involved in it, were you kind of, if you were looking at it as a city ad hoc, were you the chair? Were you the kind of head of it? Was there any other influencer decision, part of the decision process? Or was that handled by you and the team listed here?
Yeah, I mean, I obviously led up the whole committee, obviously based on, you know, city administrations pretty much stayed out of the process. So coming up with the list of the different departments based on their roles in the city. So coming up with the list of the different departments based on their roles in the city, especially, you know, bringing public safety in and, and the treasurer and the clerk. So, yeah, I mean, I was definitely the lead. I've been pretty much the, working on this day in and out since this whole project started. So, yeah, I'm definitely the key point of contact for this whole progress. Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. And then my, and then Jackie, I saw both your hands go up, so.
Well, so because the, well, it was, the question was raised about millennial digital, Millennium Digital being at the top of the list after what happened last fall. So can the city manager speak to, is it possible to discuss the findings of your professional body relative to the events that Commissioner Shaw was referring to?
I wasn't planning to, but I'm happy to. So there were some individuals that alluded that because I happen to know the owner of this firm, that there would be a potential conflict of interest. And so, out of abundance of caution, I turned over everything that happened last fall, any news articles, the chain of events with the cyber attack, any emails that I'd received to the ICMA Professional Conduct Committee, which met in Washington DC. The committee met on my case on February 19th. They are not opening up an investigation. They, they said there was no conflict of interest, and they are not going to discuss it further.
Thank you. Jackie, go ahead.
This is more of a comment, perhaps in response to Commissioner Shaw's question. Is that acceptable at this point?
I'll allow it if it's relatively brief. If we're going to get into the meat, I'd like to have a motion, but if it's a brief comment, then please.
Well, I, I have been very impressed watching the approach that this multidisciplinary team has taken. In this case, the selection process was extremely transparent. It followed city policy in terms of bidding and evaluation. The city IT staff has already earned, I think, everyone's respect for having gotten us to this point and, and trust in having completed so many milestones on the way to our IT independence. This is a case where I believe we all should be trusting the subject matter experts, because we are not technology subject matter experts here, and I'm intending to approve the recommendation.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question, Jerry. You had mentioned, and we have a three-year contract here, it would go, come up, and at that point, recommendations would come from staff again. You mentioned empower staff, and we do have this contract here, and I just wanted, because it was, you know, you explained a lot of a very detailed process, or long process to us. The goal then is to, as we get the system in place and we learn the system, is to really peel off this, the assistance, having them as some of that baseline that we need right now, always having them as that backup for security and everything else that we need, we know we need. But is, so ultimately, though, is the goal to basically use them less and less over time, and I know that will never go away, well, I shouldn't say never. We've moved up from the AS400 system we used to have when I think I started here 10 years ago, so we don't know where technology will go, but is that ultimately, you know, kind of explain that goal a little bit more?
Yeah, so it's obviously a little, you know, to come out the gate and hire a six-person IT department, I don't even know if we would need that many people, but, you know, some of the, the expertise that gets brought, you know, managing firewalls, managing server backups, you know, those are, can be more complicated. So by using these kind of firms for that, especially out the gate, is definitely important, and the security aspect. I think for the city, you know, we have our support specialist on staff, Porter, and we are recommending another staff, which was in the original memo back in November. So we do want to start having more boots-on-the-ground staff involved, and so that help desk kind of component, we can start to strip away. Obviously, out the gate, we want to make sure we have more than enough support, but we think we can kind of create a lean, efficient model because we started from scratch. And it's always good to have an expert on the phone if you need it, especially with some of our services being 24/7, so there is some, you know, we don't want to have staff maybe answering the phone at 3:00 AM, and these firms can step in for, especially with police officers having an issue with their MDT. So, yeah, I think, you know, we got to get our feet wet a little bit, but I think long-term, we can kind of build a lean staff and still have some expertise, but yeah, strip away some of the kind of long-term costs associated with having a full-on managed service provider, which is kind of common in government, where you don't want to have anything to do with IT and you just outsource it all. So, you know, one thing that's nice, too, with all this, we, the city really didn't have a good understanding of a lot of our systems and how they interacted, and so just getting all that documented has been huge for the city, and so we've got a good foundation now to, to keep building that knowledge in staff, so.
Great, thank you for that. Go ahead, Jackie.
I, I believe from reading, reading the documents, that we're expecting to anticipate some pretty significant cost savings in terms of where we're headed with the new provider versus where we have been with the, the county IT support. Are there any details or any general information you'd be able to share about that?
Yeah, so obviously, that'll come out a little more in light with the budget. Heidi and I have been working closely, and her team, on building an internal IT fund. And so, the cost savings, the key cost savings is obviously the amount of money that we're just, we were paying monthly to the county, right, for our current services. So that number's obviously gone down with this recommended contract. But you will see that there are some costs now that we have by taking on this endeavor, staffing and replacement costs. But at the end of the day, what I really ended up seeing with the numbers, because at first, there could be a sticker shock, because you're like, oh, well, that seems high, but really, what we're doing is just having kind of your standard, minuscule IT budget. Again, we never really had that number. That was something that was hard to kind of pull out, and so I think we're actually in a good place for, from a transparency standpoint. It's like, how much does technology cost? And we have reduced kind of that bigger overhead by paying, you know, the other government organization in the building to now empowering ourselves and trying to be a little more efficient with that cost, because it, it took a lot to kind of untangle where all this, you know, departments were buying softwares and, you know, licensing, and all that was really kind of in shambles. And so, we really brought it all together, and with the cyber incident, we now have some software that there's a cost to, but it's monitoring every end-user system. So, yeah, there is a cost savings for that kind of overall managed provider, but we, you will see that there is now a cost for IT in the city, which is a, is important for everyone to know, because it is, it's a critical component, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or a motion?
I'll make the motion that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute a contract with Millennium Digital Technologies MDT Tech in an amount not to exceed $383,732.44 plus an additional 3% contingency for Information Technology Support Services. Such contract subject as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds available in the IT Fund 636.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Warner? Any further questions or comments from the commission? Thank you for that Herculean effort of explaining to us. So with that, I'll open it up. Is there any public comment on this? Well, seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And I look forward to my ticket that's been out for six months to try and get my email back connected to my iPad, maybe working now, so thank you for that. Moving on to appointments, we have the consideration of the Board of Tax Review. It looks like this was Mark, Tim, and Mitch, so if anybody has any comments or wants to introduce it or just make a motion?
Oh, go ahead. I was just probably just going to about say the same thing. We had two interviews for two vacancies, both competent, highly qualified individuals to fill those roles.
Great.
So with that said, I'll move that Paul Fitzsimmons for reappointment to the term expiring December 31, 2027, and Laura Dagwell for appointment to the term expiring December 31st, 2027, previously held by John Peck on the Board of Tax Review as recommended by the ad hoc committee, consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Tim Warner, and Commissioner Mitch Treadwell.
Support.
All right. Any other comment on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to a appointment for Traverse City Light and Power, and this was Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Treadwell, and I'll hand it over to Tim. Go ahead.
Yeah, John Taylor reapplied, and we are recommending his reappointment. He has served for 15 years already. They're five-year terms on Light and Power. He's currently chair of the Light and Power Board, has tremendous amount of knowledge about municipal utilities, electric utilities in general, and where they're going in the 21st century, so quite a valuable part of the board at Traverse City Light and Power, and that's why we chose to recommend that he be reappointed. So with that, I will make the motion that John Taylor be reappointed to the term expiring April 7, 2030 on the Traverse City Light and Power Board as recommended by the ad hoc committee, consisting of Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Treadwell.
Support. Thank you for that. And on a personal note, as someone who's served on that board for eight years, I believe John's the chair again right now, and so he provides that valuable leadership as well. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Welcome to another term, Mr. Taylor. All right, so now we have an DDA ad hoc that needs to be formed. We had a couple people of Hillary Askcroft, who's been serving, I got a promotion of her job, so she's been traveling, so we're going to look to replace her, and Todd McMillan and Shelley Spencer all have terms coming up, correct?
Yes.
And so, we'll be establishing an ad hoc for a couple that are ahead of time and one that is kind of, or is Hillary up right now? Sorry, I.
For the Arts Commission? Or for DDA Board?
The DDA Board. Did I skip one?
She's simply resigning from the DDA Board.
Right, and that's what I was going to say. So some are normal, we've had some turnover on that board, some are just reviewing the seats, and one is an actual resignation. So just wanted to clarify that, since we've had a lot of resignations in general. So if somebody wants to make the motion for that ad hoc?
I'll make the motion that the resignation of Hillary Askcroft from the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors be accepted, and the city commission ad hoc interview committee be established to make a recommendation regarding three appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors, one term expiring September 15th, 2027, previously held by Hillary Askcroft, and two terms expiring September 15th, 2025, currently held by Todd McMillan and Shelley Spencer, and that Commissioner Stanley, Mayor Shamro, and Mayor Pro Tem Wilson be appointed to such committee with Commissioner Stanley as chair.
Support. And I'll just say that I do like this idea. I'm not sure what the ad hoc committee and ad hoc committees will decide going forward, but I like the idea that when we do have a resignation, that it rolls in the upcoming appointments, so that we just have one phase of interviews.
I agree with that, and I also would say that this is maybe slightly earlier than usual, but that we have been catching up for about a year now.
Right.
So hopefully, more of these will be much more ahead of the expiration date in general, too. So any further comment on this motion from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now, we have a TC Arts Commission ad hoc, and mine is loading. So Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner Warner to one seat, correct?
Yes, this is for, to address the resignation of Joshua Hoysington from Arts Commission.
Okay, and do we have anybody who wants to make the motion?
I have a stay.
Yeah, I know. Go ahead, Jackie, thank you.
I move that the resignation of Joshua Hoysington from the TC Arts Commission be accepted, and the city commission ad hoc interview committee be established to make a recommendation regarding this appointment to the TC Arts Commission expiring May 18th, 2027, and that Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Warner, and Mayor Pro Tem Wilson be appointed to such committee with Commissioner Shaw as chair.
Support.
All right. Any other comment on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So moving on to reports and announcements, I'll start with Jackie at the end of the line. Does anyone have any reports from their respective committees?
I do.
I figured you would, which I appreciate.
Planning Commission met on April 15th last week for further discussion of short-term rentals. There was a demonstration of a new dashboard to track short-term rental licenses, and if anyone would like the link sent to them, I'd be happy to do that. As of the, today, we are at 690 licensed vacation homes plus 59 tourist homes in the city of Traverse City, and that is as of March 20th. The dashboard gets updated monthly on the 20th of the month. Our number as of the end of 2024 was 538, so it's gone up by about 150 licenses. And there was some, some discussion of whether there's a gold rush effect going on, that as we discuss changes to short-term rental policy, that people are getting in while the getting is good. We also discussed grandfathering of licenses, the impact of the proposed short-term rental changes on the number of non-conforming short-term rentals, whether possibly there's a role for homeowners associations in condominiums in terms of awarding short-term rental licenses within a specific building. I am meeting with Aspire North this week to follow up on their offer to share data on short-term rentals in the region and plan to share that with the rest of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. That's great for giving that.
And then also, our, our ad hocs, the appointments ad hoc had our second meeting on April 16th. We reviewed very valuable information that the clerk's office was able to provide from a survey of prior candidates and appointees, and talked about ways to perhaps digitize our process, streamline it, try to save some hours, man-hours from the clerk's office, try to increase access and communication with candidates, and also to better recognize the volunteers who serve on our boards and commissions. And our next meeting for that ad hoc is May the 1st. And then finally, the Ethics Ad hoc met on April 8th with Lauren as our staff, staff facilitator, and Mary Grover. We discussed the goals, the scope, and the resources to guide our overall conversation. A draft of the new Grand Traverse County Ethics Code was distributed to members, and we will be meeting again tomorrow.
Tomorrow, at noon, apparently.
At noon.
Apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other reports from any other boards?
Well, I was going to talk about planning and Ethics Ad hoc, but Jackie stole my thunder.
I know you guys are, you guys are together a lot, so maybe we'll have you guys coordinate in the future, but, but no, appreciate both of that, the service and Jackie, meeting with Aspire North after their comments. All right, any, anybody else? Last call? Seeing none, we will move on to the public comment portion of our evening, the final public comment, but we do have a reserved public comment. So welcome Kristy Minervini here to talk on behalf of Northwest Michigan Coalition of Homelessness, and/or Ashley. Sorry, it's Kristy's name on the, on this.
She submitted the form.
This is general, general public comment you said first?
No.
It's after reserve public comment.
Yep.
No? Good?
You're good, yep. Reserve public comment, and then it'll be general.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone, for having us here tonight, and since this is technically public comment, I'll give our update, and then, if allowed, you guys can ask questions near the end. So we know that homelessness is a complex issue. We've been dealing with it in our community for decades, and we also know that it's solvable. And it's solvable when communities come together in this way. Communities across the country have developed this task force model to address and end homelessness, and we are copying them. And we are developing a task force, and we've been doing so over the past, oh my, probably in its infancy, kind of over the past year. We're kind of building on the work that we did with the homelessness collective that you all have heard about through leadership from Dave Mangan-Bear at the Community Foundation and Sakura Takano with Rotary Charities. We're really Where really, that group and those convenings set the stage for the work to come through the task force. We're now ready to kick off our actual plan. How are we going to prevent and end homelessness in our community? So the task force to address and end homelessness brings together government, nonprofit, healthcare sector, housing authorities, and housing partners, law enforcement businesses, and other partners to coordinate efforts and create lasting solutions by working together. The goal of this task force is to develop one solid, cohesive, and coordinated plan to prevent and end homelessness in our community. I'll start by describing our leadership team. So we've been meeting for a couple months now, kind of putting this scope together. So the leadership team is myself. We've brought on Kristi Minervini at the Coalition to help us coordinate this. We have Liz from the city, Nate Elder from Grand Traverse County, Sakura from Rotary, and then Ryan Hannan as a subject matter expert, leading our group. So what the leadership team has been doing is providing, and will continue to do, is provide strategic direction, oversight, and accountability for our work. They're responsible for the overall vision, guiding the development of the community plan, and ensuring that the work groups have the resources needed to succeed and actually accomplish the goals that we'll lay out. These are the main goals of the task force, but really the overarching one is to develop a unified strategy. I want to be really clear that the task force is not like a, we're not going to have small goals over the course of time, and it is not actionable in that way. The task force is to create a plan. The plan will be unveiled at the end of this year, and, you know, we'll be updating folks along the way, but it is not like someone comes up with a solution next month, and then we act on it immediately following. It's to create a comprehensive plan that we can all agree on that is based in data and led in a collaborative way. So the goals within that plan will be to address the systemic barriers to housing, both in the city and in the county, maximize funding and resources, enhance service coordination, track progress and accountability, incorporate community perspectives and input, and I'll speak to that more specifically in a moment, and then advocate for policy solutions that may or may not need to change to fully get us to where we need to go. This is our ten-month timeline. It started in March, when we were meeting with the leadership team and really setting forth like how this was going to take place in our community. The work groups of this task force will start meeting on May first. And so May first, folks will come together to start talking about solutions, agreeing on the data, and agreeing on the desired end state we want to see in our community. So over the summer, we'll be doing that, we'll be strategizing, problem-solving, coming up with solutions, creating budgets that match those solutions to really scale up the efforts in our community primarily related to housing, because we all know that housing is what will end this crisis for us in our community. September, we'll unveil a draft plan, and in October, we will have public input sessions, so anyone in the public can come, share their feedback on the plan, and ask questions. November will really finalize it, and then December, we'll come back to you all with the plan. This is the structure to develop the plan. I already went over the task force leadership team. The Advisory Council will also be, the leadership team will also be meeting with the Advisory Council throughout the next ten months, or I guess less, since it started already. The working groups will start meeting in May. There'll be Safety Net Services, Emergency Shelter and Services, and Housing Solutions. Each of those work groups will tackle the following focus areas, that these are determined by other task forces across the country, and by subject matter experts doing this work every day. Tackling crisis management and safety, prevention of homelessness, diversion, access to the homeless response system, basic needs for folks experiencing homelessness, emergency shelter and day services, housing navigation, housing with and without supports, the development needed of deeply affordable housing, and the supports that help to keep folks in housing. Each of those work groups that I listed will be tackling these big five questions. And these questions are really designed to get at identifying the gaps in our current system, in our current funding sources. Why aren't we able to see more progress in our region despite our best efforts? Identify solutions that are working, what are we seeing that is working here? And then how do we scale up those efforts to really meet the need? Safety Net Services, more specifically, is a group designed to focus on the services that are provided to folks while they're experiencing homelessness, and also those who are at risk. So we know that folks suffering from mental health conditions, substance use disorder, they're at higher risk of becoming homeless, that is not a predetermined factor that you will become homeless, but we know these are risk areas that need to be addressed. So Safety Net Services will really focus on those things. These are the folks who have already said yes to joining our task force and being on the Safety Net Services work group. Jen Holm will be the co-chair of that group alongside our Street Outreach Manager at Goodwill, Bailey. We also have Community Action Agency, Representation, Munson Family Practice, and St. Vincent de Paul, who really focuses on preventative efforts. This is not an exhaustive list, we're still following up with folks along the way. Emergency Shelter and Services, the goal is to improve the crisis response system to ensure that we have enough shelter beds in our community. We've done a lot of work over the past year or more to ensure that that takes place, and it's, you know, still unfolding in the next couple weeks here. But this plan will really talk about the longevity. What will it take five years from now? How many shelter beds do we need? Who will fund it? Who will provide the services? And these are the folks who will be on that work group. The work group will be led by Pat Livingston, Board Chair of Safe Harbor, as well as the Executive Director of Goodwill Northern Michigan, Dan Biron. We have the Community Cares Coalition, Representation of Jessica Hamilton and/or Megan Wick. They said that they're gonna switch back and forth potentially. We have Jubilee House and Grace, represented by Jim Para. We have a lot of day services also provided at Central United Methodist, so Ryan will join us there as well. And then we have our Women's Resource Center Domestic Violence Shelter represented as well. And then finally, we have Housing Solutions. So the goal of the Housing Solutions Work Group is to scale up housing efforts. We, like I said, and I say it every time I'm speaking to you guys, housing is what will ultimately end homelessness. We need more units, we need more support services, and we need more sustainable funding, funding both of those aspects to get us to where we need to go related to housing. Housing Solutions will be split, in the work group, sorry, will be split into Housing Development Partners, and then Service Providers, excuse me. And then they'll come back together, they'll come back together during the work group to kind of share ideas and thoughts. We're hoping to have a Chair identified in the next week here for Housing Development, but these folks are already confirmed. We have the Traverse City Housing Commission, we have Representation from Goodwill, Mishta, Grand Traverse County Brownfield Redevelopment, Woda Cooper, the City of Traverse City Planning Department, and East Bay Township Planning. And then Service Provision, we have our main permanent supportive housing service providers. We have Northwest Michigan Supportive Housing, NMCAA Addiction Treatment Services, Brickways, and Housing North. And then still a couple more there that we're hoping will join us. And then finally, the Advisory Council includes Representation from the leadership team, as well as the Chairs from each of the work groups. They're really helping us identify progress from each work group, offer input on the proposed solutions, and again, help secure necessary resources. I'm not reading all these, because my voice is going out, and there's two pages of them. But lots of enthusiastic support for the Advisory Council. Almost every single entity, an individual we asked was an enthusiastic yes. So I'll share these slides after as well. All right, and then finally, all of this kind of tees us up to an ask. So we hope to return with a budget request for the city to provide sustainable funding for permanent supportive housing. The city, a few months back, did the resolution to help support the Chronic Initiative, which really falls within all of this work. And we'd like the commission to authorize the city manager to work with us, us being the Coalition on Homelessness, on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar line item to present at the study session in May, when you all talk about your budget. The task force will ultimately have funding recommendations in it, but this kind of, this starts us at a good place, and really allows the city to champion these efforts. So that's all I have for you tonight, and thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Is five-hundred-thousand dollars enough? And I'm wanting to link this to our conversation about how much of our, excuse me, how much of the budget we leave on the table every year. And so as we're looking at the amount of money that is sitting on the sidelines unallocated, and that we've been very fiscally conservative about, I would like to link any conversation about that to what the real needs are of this group, and what our community actually needs to have available in terms of resources, which probably exist at present in our ledger, to develop housing, to provide those services, and to be the safety net that we need to, for the people experiencing homelessness in our community. So I'm glad that you had a specific dollar amount, and I want to see that be robust, and a line item that continues as long as it takes to solve this issue effectively, which we know is possible.
Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead, Tim.
To follow on to that, I guess I would appreciate, maybe at the May twelfth, to the extent possible, that this is both, I'm talking two directions here, that the community partners that are working on the two thousand and twenty-eight goal and chronic homelessness, which I know is just a part of this. We can't answer necessarily the question, is it like five-hundred-thousand dollars is not enough, but as far as how much do we have available, and what makes sense to apply toward it this year, especially and going forward, the more we can see the biggest picture as far as which entities have how many units of supportive housing in the pipeline, they expect a few units next year, this many the following, like, just lay it all out there. Like, knowing that some are just plans, some are dreams, some are in the works, whatever it might be, but it'll help us understand maybe how best, and how much money to, as far as our piece of the puzzle, and what we can potentially do.
Okay.
To the extent possible, thanks.
Yeah, I guess I have a, on the same line, but a little bit more specific questions. Going through the slides there, and first of all, I want to say I a hundred percent agree with what's been said already. If there's an opportunity and we can do more, I also understand that, to a point, our budget is limited to, within our jurisdiction. But, you know, I saw East Bay was on there with Claire Kerner, and I saw that Chris Barshuff is on there representing Garfield on a different committee. But I do know that Garfield has a planner, and so is there a reason Garfield isn't represented on the development group, and maybe it's just they haven't said yes yet, or they're figuring out who could do it? And what other townships maybe have that option? I know, you know, we had a, you can't beat me. I'm ruling you can't beat me. So that the development of, or sorry, so, you know, we had a conversation recently that some think that Blair Township might be too far away, but Blair is connected by Beta and other things. So hearing from some of our fellow neighbors that are adjacent to the city and have room to have some of this growth, and to the point that Commissioner Warner made of what's out there, what's coming, but also really making sure that they're at the table for the big part of this conversation as much as possible. So you might not have that answer now, or unfortunately, I won't be here on the twelfth, but I'll definitely tune in and watch, and maybe ask ahead of time. But, you know, what the plans are to engage every, at least Grand Traverse County jurisdiction.
Yeah, so in terms of Garfield Township Planner, that's, that ask is out there. So waiting to hear back. Yeah, that's John. It's like, yep, that, we're waiting for a response. In terms of the townships, so, yeah, we, when we were discussing who we would invite from a development perspective for the townships, at the leadership team, we really talked about the ones who are development-ready, and who have already done developments to the scale that we need, and have been part of the conversation already, and that was East Bay and Garfield. I have, I mean, we can bring it back to the leadership team. I have no hesitations inviting Blair.
Just curious, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
We did get the beep, but I'll let Heather go ahead. There was a beep on us, but go ahead.
When you, when you talk about a line item of half a million dollars, is that for bricks and mortar, kind of? Is that what you, or is this administration as well?
It, it was wide open. It's really more for just sustainability. We need a line item. If we're really going to do this correctly, we need a line item in the budget every single year for the next. You know, the task force will determine that, but for several years ongoing. Five-hundred-thousand dollars will not buy us anything in terms of development, especially in the city. It won't even, it may develop one unit of a one-bedroom apartment, and without subsidy. That's just to build one unit. And I can bring all of that data and all of those numbers to May twelfth, but it, we left it a little wide open, because it could, it could go for different things, and I wasn't sure of the funding source, and I know those would have different limitations. But five-hundred-thousand dollars will not develop much of anything in this community.
So will that be part of the clearer picture conversation we'll have on the twelfth?
Yeah, yep.
Yep. And just to circle back to this figure, it's a round figure, it's a starting figure, it's a half a million dollars, but to tie it back to the city's budget and to our general fund, we do have a city policy that limits the amount of our general fund to twenty-five percent, and we have been high in recent years. And I remember that came up in my first budget, I believe it actually came up in my interview. And so we have been, are you shaking your head? Yes, so we have been working on our budget amendments for this year to reduce that to thirty-five percent, and that will be presented on the twelfth, to reduce it gradually, to get it to that appropriate line. And then in our next year's fiscal year, we're hoping to reduce it further to thirty percent, so again, get much more in line with our policy without doing it all in one year, which we didn't feel would be a responsible, measured way to achieve that. However, that, you know, the treasurer will be able to speak to, if that, if the City Commission wanted to identify a different figure based on, based on that policy, and if that would be the, in what this body would prefer to do at this time, so.
We'll have some more clarity by then.
Yes. Leave my voice to.
I think the buzzer for the fifteen minutes, because this is still under public comment, has gone off, but any last things that people want to put in to prep for the twelfth? There will be a more robust conversation on the twelfth, it sounds like, so. Seeing none, thank you so much, Ashley. Great to hear for this, we're excited to have the conversation. Okay, so with that, reserved public comment has ended, there is now a time for general public comment. It can be about anything under the sun, it does not have to be anything that we talked about tonight.
Justin Reed, question, so the TC Housing Office is, last time I've heard, was by appointment only. And to me, that seems kind of arbitrary to go ahead and say after there's housing need. Whenever that office is appointment by only, and if somebody tries to call there, and they call like several weeks, and they don't get answered back, I think that's kind of a barrier and obstacle. And I will say this, is for housing to change, so does the characteristics of neighborhoods have to change? I've heard this tell too often, to where, oh, well, it's gonna change our neighborhood, oh, we really don't want it. So with that, I think, you know, there's, there's gonna have to be some changes, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a Housing Commissioner sitting right here, so I'm sure Mitch is taking notes on that.
Hi, Harry Swyston, Traverse City resident. I emailed all of you and the mayor a letter yesterday, email yesterday, and obviously it's so late date, you've probably even read it yet, so I'd like to read it to you. To the City Commissioners and the Mayor, we in a central neighborhood called Boom, base of Old Mission Peninsula, strongly appeal to of Old Mission Peninsula, strongly appeal to you to consider adding a sidewalk along the east side of Peninsula Court to the existing new sidewalk at Anderson Street. The four properties that will be affected by the new sidewalk all agree, we all want it. And this is the best part, I don't think any trees have to be removed, possibly one telephone pole. When I compare that to the sidewalk they want to put in from Milliken down to M-37, you know, the state highway going up Peninsula, and once you get there, I don't know, it seems like it's leading to nowhere until that tar trail gets there. You get that down, that road there, now you've walked from Milliken down to the highway, now you gotta walk along the highway. That's not a good deal. I sent you a video also of these young girls, they go, they went directly down Peninsula Court from the high school. It's the shortest route. These girls had gone, they could have gone down to Anderson Street and went south to Front Street to get to the park, but they didn't. Why? Because mostly because young people's minds are not fully developed, which can lead to poor, unsafe choices like these girls made. I don't know if you watched the movie yet, the video I sent you, but one girl standing there and starts going there looking, and then she goes and the girl behind her wanted to go, but she was afraid to go. That's an accident waiting to be happening. This should be independent of waiting for the Brown Bridge Authority funds that may be approved for a future park improvement, because the future has arrived. The exponential increase in the traffic on Peninsula begs for something to be done now. If the money's available to put a sidewalk on Eastern Avenue from the high school to M-37, we should be able to do this one. I made a video of me walking around that route, and I didn't include it because it's five minutes long. I'm hoping, and I have my application here for this particular, the 15-minute thing next week, on a May 5th, and hopefully, I don't know, can you get a video besides slides?
If you send it ahead of time to my office, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Like I said, there's this, I've already talked to MDOT and Forest, they did a kind of pluminary speed study a couple years ago, because if you get to do a speed study and it comes up higher...
Mr. Swyston, thank you.
You have to raise it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I sent you that video.
Just to clarify, I think he's clarifying something off if anybody else wanted to make general public comment, but I hear we're going to have a reserve public comment coming up, so we'll look forward to that, sir. Thank you.
Well, hello, Richard Robbins from the Grand Traverse State Streets Alliance. Thank you so much for the time you afforded me a couple weeks ago to present the alliance. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Have you all gotten to the website? GTSafeStreets.org. Come on, you gotta do it and get, get signed up for updates. We have over 200 people that have signed up. These are active families in the Traverse City area, so it's, it's been quite a success. Also, just wanted to give you kind of an update. We had a quick hits list that you see on the site. Again, we want to reiterate that our visioning for as-is and to-be are just to start the conversation. We are not being prescriptive that these are what we require or what we've done exhaustive studies on, but they're, to get the conversation started, and they've been accept, they've been received very, very positively. But the quick hits that we have, we'll be meeting with the city staff in the coming weeks to discuss prioritizing those and coming back to the city with some thoughts collaboratively together with city staff on, to provide you some recommendations. So more to come there. The two-by-four vision, remember we talked about the idea of having two east-west and four north-south protected or delineated, which is an important differentiation, protected or delineated paths for non-automotive transportation corridors. Well, I've all gone out and I've found out a whole lot of interesting maps. We have the, you know, the Protected Bike Network map from years ago. I've got TARTS maps, I've got, I've got MDOT maps, I got all sorts of maps. But you know what? They're all over the place. There's nothing, it's consolidated. So that's what we want to, what we want to really, we, through the investigation, we've really, we've really determined that that's, that's the challenge. And we want a map up there in the next six months that shows a community and city-agreed approach. So when we start to do our investments in our infrastructure, we're going to those areas to fill those gaps, not, not going around 35 different streets, and this won't be completed for 50 years. So that's, that's our objective. That's what we're doing. We're very involved in the Complete Streets Ad Hoc Committee and have been, been very, very pleased with the work we've done there. And we're really encouraging to have a advisory committee permanent for non-motorized transportation. So just a quick update. Thanks so much, and we look forward to the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight? Bringing it back to the commission, any final public comment from the commission? All right. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a great evening.